Good evening, everyone. The time is seven oh three P M. And I would like to call the June seventh, twenty twenty-three Parent and Community Advisory Council meeting to order. The purpose of this meeting is for the committee to discuss why we are here and what we hope to accomplish as an advisory council. This meeting will be recorded, and it is on the PGCPS Board webpage for public to view. At this time, we would like to do roll call. Mr. Ross, can you please call the roll?
Certainly. Reverend Dr. Orlando Jermaine Bago, Mr. Clarence Dixon, Mr. Will Epps.
Present.
Ms. Sateria Hollenshut.
Present.
Dr. Sheila Jackson. Ms. Carleda Lundie.
Present.
Chair Dolores Milhouse.
Present.
Dr. Sharon Porter. T. Carter Ross, present. Ms. Keisha Thorpe.
Present.
Ms. Carol Walker. Ms. Robin Welsh.
Present.
Ms. Talise Wood.
Present.
Mrs. Adam Stafford. Chair, there are one, two, three, four, eight people present. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. We'll move into one point two, the welcoming opening remarks from ourselves, the PCAC Chair. I want to thank everyone for being here. I want to thank the Board Office, Ms. Lopez, for the support in all of our district members for the PCAC who are present today. Thank you all. I am Dolores Milhouse, the Chair of the Parent and Community Advisory Council and Representative for District Seven. At this time, I want to take note that Mr. Clarence Dixon is present.
So noted.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into one point three, the adoption of the meeting agenda for today's meeting, June seventh, twenty twenty-three. Are there any objections to adopting the June seventh, twenty twenty-three agenda? Hearing none, the agenda has been adopted. We're going to move into item one point four, the approval of meeting minutes from May third, twenty twenty-three. Are there any objections to approve the meeting minutes for May the third, twenty twenty-three? Hearing none, the meeting minutes for May the third, twenty twenty-three have been adopted. We're going to move into item one point five, report from the PCAC Chair. I don't really have much to report. I do have some exciting news that I met with Ms. Dent last week, and Ms. Lopez and Ms. Dent is working really focused on making sure that we get the joint communication letter that we have been asking for to be in place, as well as establishing some communication resources that we need to engage and communicate with the individuals who may want to speak with us without having to use our own personal accounts. I did reach out to the Parent Advisory Council for Baltimore City. And once we identified who the new officers are, the hope is to begin to create connection with other parent groups to see how they are navigating, operating in the state of Maryland and the work that they are doing, and some things that we can maybe work to build capacity in our own school district. We are scheduled and ready for our first retreat, which is this Saturday, June the tenth. Dr. Jackson will be, well, Dr. Jackson and her team will be leading that event. I also want to share, and I just want to give a little bit of my time up to Ms. Thorpe. So instead of me just reading the text that you gave me, if you can just take a few seconds to speak about the teacher appreciation event that you're having.
Yes, thank you so much. So the City of Praise and the Teachers Matter Ministry that was started by myself and Dr. Tricia Thorpe, which is my sister. We are hosting a red carpet event for teachers across the DMV. We really want teachers to come out and celebrate. It's at the end of the year. We know teachers are feeling a little burnt out and a little bit overwhelmed, and we really want them to come, let their hair down, have some heavy hors d'oeuvres, have some entertainment. And also, we are giving away tons of scholarship for certification, recertification, professional development for the summer. And you will get your check immediately on hand if you are one of those scholarship recipients. There, so, and we have other surprises, and we also have some school supplies giveaway as well. So we do have a lot in store for teachers. So we want all teachers to come out, and we want community representatives and also parents to come out and support teachers. Because we're in a time where teachers are feeling weary. We have teacher shortages, and we really want to hold on to our teachers. We want to show them that we value them, we appreciate them, and that they're not in this alone. So it's more so of a, we are a village, so please come out. And on June tenth, that's Saturday, June tenth, the event starts at five P M. We're going to be having the reception at five to six. And then the main event is going to be from six to eight with a scholarship giveaway and entertainment. So we want all our teachers to come out and also parents and community members and leaders to come out and support them as well.
Thank you very much. And it's the same date as our retreat, but it is in the evening, so you have time to attend both. So I will make sure, I know Ms. Thorpe, you sent that via text, so if you can send it as an email, so I could share that in that way, so we can send it to the PCAC members via email, and they can disseminate that information. But I think that's a great opportunity for us to engage with the community and let teachers know that our PCAC members have an opportunity to support them, and it's led by an event by one of our PCAC members, who is also an instructor. So thank you, Ms. Thorpe. Appreciate that. That is really all that I have. I have been really working, and I appreciate you all's feedback for the report. I was combing through the meeting minutes based on conversations that I've had with a lot of you all and tried to compile what we spoke about as a collective. And I hope that I did justice with that. So thank you all for your feedback. And that is it for the report from the chair. We will, are there any questions? Comments? I also do want to do one more thing. I want to congratulate Ms. Lundie. Thank you, Ms. Lundie, for the work that you do, and she was just sworn in with the Board of Electors, right?
The Prince George's County Board of Elections.
Yes, Board of Elections. And so thank you for the tireless work that you do in the community and the impact. And yeah, we are up here with a bunch of heavy hitters in the PCAC. And if there's anyone else that I did not recognize, you just didn't tell me about the wonderful work you were doing. So next time, let me know, and I'll report it out. So thank you. That is all I have. We will move into item one point zero six, report from the Board Liaison.
All right. Hi, everyone. This is Sheila Adams Stafford, and unfortunately. Sorry.
And I'll speak on her behalf. She's reporting joy.
Yeah, no, it's so funny because you ask kids, you know, you're like, okay, look, when I turn this camera on, please, just don't. And they, of course, they do what they do. So I appreciate you all allowing me to be on here. See, I'm really excited about this Saturday of the retreat. And I wanted to mention that Chair Milhouse and I will be meeting with some of the board staff and also some of the administration to really help with some of the key ways that we can get the word out about the work of the PCAC through the school system resources. So I know that's something that Chair Milhouse has mentioned over and over. It has been having like a site, a site, a site on the, a site on the board website that will feature PCAC and sort of the work that you all do and how people can get in contact with you. So I have my, you know, really hoping that that will come out of this meeting that we're having next week. In addition, I've been, you know, trying to figure out how we can get you all some type of way how I can get you all some support in terms of like an email address where people can email you. I am so sorry. Wednesday nights are so tough. Sorry. Getting you all like an email address where people can email you and you're not having, you know, put your personal email address out as you're out in the community. So that's something that I'm hoping that we'll be able to get out of or to talk to the administration about. And so really, those are just my two updates that we're having in upcoming meetings, you know, trying to find ways to better publicize the work that the PCAC is doing and better ways that folks can communicate with you. Those are my goals for those upcoming meetings. And of course, I know that this retreat will be awesome. I'm going to try to poke my head in and see you all in person. But I know that that's coming along great, and I'm sure that there will be some really great conversations and connections that come out of that this weekend.
Thank you so much, Ms. Adams Stafford. And we are now going to move into, does anyone have any questions for Ms. Adams Stafford? Thank you. Mr. Carter, I want to make note that Dr. Orlando Bago is here.
Noted.
We're going to now move into the report of the CEO designee, and Dr. Jackson is not present, so Ms. Welsh, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And I also look forward to this Saturday and the retreat. I think it's going to be exciting that we have the opportunity to meet all together and work together moving forward with parent engagement. As far as things that we have been working on out of our office, as I will say that we finalized a legislative spreadsheet which is used for the administration within the school system, and the main reason is to lay out specifically which divisions are responsible for which laws that they have to implement this upcoming year. So it's all about compliance and ensuring that they are, that we as a system are in compliance with any new laws that have been passed. Also, Dr. Golson did submit to the Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee a list of recommended policies to address for the upcoming school year. And I know that zero one zero five, I think the parent, the PCAC policy, I did make sure that was listed on that for two reasons, because you did request that. But also, and the House Bill ten seventy-nine was passed, and in that bill, it actually mentions the PCAC. And it specifically says that one of the things when you're looking at representatives to be on the PCAC that we need to ensure that we have diversity, and that is proportional to our demographics within the county so that we are representing, you know, every, every group that, you know, our parents and our, our community in every possible way. So, and so we want to incorporate that. We do not have that language sitting in the policy, so therefore, we will make those changes as well as recommendations from the PCAC in terms of what you might be advising that committee for what you think should also be incorporated into that policy when we get to that policy. So and then I'm, oh, and then there are three policies that are coming up to the board tomorrow evening that are out for public comment. And so those three are Policy three five zero six, which is Public Charter Schools, and then Policy five one one zero point three, and that one is voluntary transfer requests for students. And then the last one is Policy five one one four point one, which is students exiting before attainment of diploma or certificate. So it's important that people have the opportunity. They're, they're already posted on the, the agenda for tomorrow evening's meeting. And once they, once after that meeting and the board votes for it to be able to go out for public comment, please take advantage of the opportunity to provide public comment on each of these policies. I know a lot of times, parents are very interested in the, what goes into being able to have your child transferred from one school to another. So that one might be a big interest for parents. And so I would, as representatives of your districts, make sure that the people within your districts are aware of the fact these policies are out there so that they can provide their public comment, because we do pay attention. The committee pays attention to the comments that do come in from the public. And that's, that's, this is the main thing that, that right now that we've been working on.
Okay, so Ms. Lundie, I see that your hand is up. I'm going to go ahead and let you go.
Thank you, Chairman. How, I have a question for Ms. Welsh. How are you?
I'm good, thanks. How are you?
Yeah. So as a new member for the Prince George's County Board of Elections now, I wanted to know what has been the engagement with respect to students being civically engaged? Is there any policy around that out there? I know I could talk to the student rep, but I just wanted to get your, your thoughts on that.
So I hate to say it, but I would have to do some research for you, but I can certainly research that for you and see if we have any policies or procedures that do address that.
Yes, thank you so much, because I do know at our, at our Elections website, we do say that they can participate at age sixteen. So that's very good to know. And I know our student government associations are out there, and I really would like to have student involvement. And I wasn't know if we have any policy. Yeah, so thank you so much.
No, I will definitely look into that for you and let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. How, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Welsh, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
One, I know that as a PCAC, we had to wait, right, to have our vote, because we didn't vote about that last week, to submit Policy zero one zero five and Administrative Procedure forty-two seventeen. But as the liaison to the CEO, is that something that you, you shared to let them know that that's going to be coming down the pipe?
So zero one zero five, I did, I specifically put that, before I even knew it was sitting in ten seventy-nine, I had put it on the list, because I provided a draft list to Dr. Golson, and that's because of the PCAC, what you were advising that we give back and look at that policy. So yes. And then the, the administrative procedure, we have, and this, so because that the administration, administrative procedure is basically telling administration, how do you operate? What are the things you need to do? That's internal, but we are, we have, are working on a list, and we have formulated the list of APs that will be priority APs for this upcoming year, and that particular AP, I already have that on the list.
Okay, excellent. So let me make sure I understand also what you said. There's one list that goes to the board for the board policies.
Correct.
And then there's another internal list. How does the community know about the administrative policy list? And is there a channel for the community to send in? Hey, we need you all to kind of look at this administrative procedure.
So there, so the community is really to provide input into the policies, which tell us, tell us what needs to be done. And then the administrative, administrative procedures actually tell us how to do it.
Right.
So we generally are not going to be, and I don't mean to sound disrespectful, because I don't intend to be at all. It's just that we don't call on community input in that piece, because it's really, we all get paid to figure out how are we going to do this. Now, saying that, though, we do a lot of times take feedback to hear, like, if, let's say, well, for example, Public Charter Schools, that's been extensive conversation over and over and over again in the policy committee, of which we have received lots of public comment. And we have taken all of that and have actually incorporated it into the policy, as well as conversation in which the policy committee has told us we want to see this sitting in the administrative procedure. So, so it is sort of a roundabout way, but it's, it's, it's really the board's responsibility to tell us what they want done, and it's the administration's responsibility to say how they're going to go about it. So we have, so that, for that reason, we don't, we don't, now, Sheila Jackson will be responsible for that particular administrative procedure. So she already has lots of information. It's not like it's in isolation, because every player that has a responsibility for doing it, it's all the different departments and divisions. They are interacting constantly, and they are pulling information. So they will be putting together their administrative procedure that will address how we're going to do, whatever it is that we're going to do, depending on the administrative procedure. So in that regard, it's, it's, it's not like the advisory committee is giving, the, the, the PCAC is giving advice, oh, you need to do your administrative procedure that way, because it's not, it's not really, it's, it's, like, there's lots of details, like, I'll give you a good example. So like, we have administrative procedures out there that say, first, you must have this form completed. And then after you complete this form, you must then complete this and go to attachments such and such. I mean, I'm talking about a lot of little details about how to actually operate and get something done. So that's why I feel like the public comment to the policy is so critically important, because the board does need to know what the public thinks about, about what, what they need to be done. I'll give you another good example. So we got public comment on the AEDs. And that, what we received was, is that, so right now, we have one AED in each elementary school, two in middle schools, and three in high schools. So the, the, probably one, two, I think, public comments came in saying, why don't we provide the same for the elementary and middle school? So the, the board said, why, why is it that we don't provide the same for the, the, the elementary and middle school? So I said, well, let me go ahead and do some research. So at our next committee meeting, I have the, our supervisor of, of school health as well as our safety officer coming, and they are going to come and provide information about, just about the logistics of the AEDs. And then from there, the committee will make a decision if they want to increase the number of AEDs. So the public, if they take advantage of public comment period, they are, and so then the AP is going to be very specific in, in the AP saying we're going to have this many APs, this many AEDs in this school and this many AEDs in that school. So I feel like I can't overstress the importance of providing public comment for the policies. And unfortunately, we get very, very little public comment. I mean, it's, it's shocking when you think how many community members we have, and no one's responding or giving us any input.
Well, I, I appreciate that, but I think some, one of the things that we've consistently spoke about is, I don't know why it's shocking. It's the way that the school district also engages with the public. So when you just stick something on board docs and say, hey, that people should come, there is no mechanism in place to really share that information widely to make sure that you are encouraging, meaning you as the school district, not you, Ms. Welsh, are really encouraging people to be aware of that. So we do this post, and hopefully, they will come. But I want to circle back to my comment or the question as it relates to how do people provide input? So let me be clear, based on who we are as the PCAC, and our purpose is to advise the CEO and the Board of Education.
Correct.
So the recommendation that we have in here and not yet voted on and adopted by us as a committee, but it is to provide input to that administrative procedure. And so if we are in place, then we are in place to provide some recommendations, and it is in line with the engagement policy that is out there, zero one zero five. So I, I do feel that it will be an opportunity for at least the PCAC to provide some input to that administrative procedure.
And maybe I.
Also impact how the school system is engaging with us as parents, community partners, as well as the student.
So maybe I misunderstood your question, because I was under the impression you were asking me, how does the public give input to the administrative procedure?
No, that's what I asked. I did. I know, I asked, yes.
But PCAC is different. So like, we have had some extensive conversations, and that's why I even put the, put it on the list so that we make sure we actually address that AP. And of course, we will be considering anything that the PCAC provides for us to be, to incorporate into the AP. So I feel like that's slightly different, because the role of the PCAC is to advise, which is very different than getting public opinion about certain things when of the administrative procedures are really into the, down into the weeds of the operation of the school system.
Mm-hmm. But I, what I, what I'm saying, and I think that we're about to get to a point that we are in agreement, that it may not follow the same practice for the board policies of public comment.
Right.
But I'm quite sure that there will be an opportunity for the PCAC to lead a, a meeting to do something where we are encouraging parents to come out, give feedback, that we are in a position to collectively compile that information and submit as part of.
Absolutely. And I think that's really important. I, I definitely think we're in agreement with that. I feel like that is an important part of the role of the PCAC.
Yes, but that goes back to the resources that we don't have. So that's, you know, that conversation that will be having, the officers are in place. But, you know, okay, so I appreciate, I have no more questions. Does anyone else have any questions for Ms. Welsh? And as always, Ms. Welsh, you always have a wealth of information. It's always new stuff for us, at least for me.
Anytime I can offer any information, don't ever hesitate to ask. I'll be glad to research it.
Yes. Thank you so much. You've been very helpful for me. I can say that much. If there's no further questions, we will move now into item two for discussions, item two point zero one, adoption of the PCAC report to the Board of Education. So I want to thank you all, as I said, for your feedback, your input. I sent the report out asking for everyone to lay their eyes on it, to provide any revisions. I then took those revisions, added those to the report itself, sent out the report again. And I'm hoping that you all took the time, because I did get some feedback that I also added back into that. So at this time, we are now ready to vote unless there is any discussion that needs to be had on any of the items. But that's why I also did it far enough in advance, so people could take time to review it, to read it, so we are not utilizing this time to go through every item unless we need to do so. And so the floor is now open for discussion. Were there any questions on the report? Do you like to pull it up? Would you like me to have Ms. Lopez to pull it up?
Well.
Ms. Lundie?
Oh, no, I was just saying, I did look at it, and just thank you so much for you, you know, doing that and putting that together, and then also for welcoming our comments and feedback even in advance, or as you put that report together on behalf of the PCAC. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. And I will say this, that it was not an activity that I did alone. I'd like to thank Mr. Carter Ross and Mr. Will Epps.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Support. It took additional eyes, as well as sending it to you all to make sure that we were dotting all the i's and crossing t's. And yes, so I see no hands for discussion. We are now ready to move into voting. Can I receive a nomination from the floor? Or not, a motion from the floor, I'm sorry, a motion from the floor to accept the adoption of the PCAC report to the Board of Education.
Motion to accept.
Second.
At this time, I would like to do a roll call vote, Mr. Carter.
All right. Vote on the motion to adopt the PCAC report for submission to the Board of Education. Dr. Reverend Orlando Jermaine Bago.
Aye.
Mr. Clarence Dixon.
Aye.
Mr. Will Epps.
Aye.
Ms. Sateria Hollenshut.
Aye.
Dr. Sheila Jackson. Ms. Carleda Lundie.
Aye.
Chair Milhouse.
Yes.
Dr. Sharon Porter. T. Carter Ross votes aye. Ms. Keisha Thorpe.
Aye.
Ms. Carol Walker.
Aye.
Ms. Robin Welsh.
Aye.
Ms. Talise Wood.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh the motion carries.
I want to thank you all for your time. The report will be sent to our board liaison um this evening, once the meeting ends. To uh move forward and have it to be added to um the upcoming meeting. Um for the board to review. Um as well as to have the officers to um have some time on the agenda. To provide a overview of the report. Thank you all. We are now moving into item two point zero two, election of the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. Um and this really should just be the twenty twenty four P C A C officers. Um the bylaw states that the officer positions are annual position. I know it was up for discussion before when we had mentioned. Uh maybe having it for the term, but it is a annual position. So at this time, the position of chair, co-chair and recording secretary for the F Y twenty four. School year um are now open. Unfortunately, we were not able to do um nomination forms prior to the meeting. Pr- due to the Open Meeting Act. Um and we also um were unable to create. A form, and Ms. Lopez, correct me if I'm wrong, to um have um. Voting to take place outside of um. Being on camera. So. Everyone has to be present. The bylaws also state that there cannot be proxy voting, so only those who are present can vote. And so at this time, um we will open up the floor for nominations for chair. Mr. Epps.
Uh yes, I nominate um is this is chair? What we don't want to determine is that the order?
Yes.
Uh nominate uh Delores Milhouse.
Thank you, Mr. Epps. Are there any other nominations for um the chair? So at this time, the nominations for chair are closed. We need to now um. Motion for me to stay in the position as chair. I do accept the nomination.
I move that um we um accept the nomination for chair to be um Delores Milhouse.
I'd like to second that.
Mr. Carter, can we do a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am. Um on the motion to have Delores Milhouse continue as chair for the coming year, Reverend Dr. Orlando Jermaine Bego. Uh believe you're muted, sir. Mr. Clarence Dixon.
Hi.
Mr. Will Epps.
Hi.
Mrs. Haria Holland shed.
Ah.
Dr. Sheila Jackson. Ms. Carla Lundie.
Aye.
Chairman House.
Aye.
Dr. Sharon Porter. T Carter Ross votes aye. Ms. Keisha Thorpe.
Aye.
Ms. Carol Walker.
Aye.
Mrs. Robin Welsh.
Aye.
Ms. Talise Wood.
Aye.
Uh motion carries. Uh Dr. Bego, did you wish to record a vote?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. The motion carries.
Thank you all. I appreciate it and um I will do my part one more year and I'm out. Um at this time, we will open up nominations for the co-chair. Mr. Epps.
Uh yes, I recommend T Carter Ross for co-chair.
Thank you, sir.
I would like to nominate myself for culture.
Thank you, Ms. Thorpe. Are there any other nominations? So at this time, we will close uh the nominations for co-chair and at this time, we have T Carter Ross. And we have Ms. Keisha Thorpe. And so at this time, we are going to go for vote for Mr. T Carter Ross.
All right, um so roll call, uh Reverend Dr. Orlando Jermaine Bego.
Uh.
Mr. Clarence Dixon.
Are uh who we are for, uh voting for at this juncture, is it uh Ms. Keisha Thorpe or Ms. Ross?
Mr. T Carter Ross.
Pass.
Mr. Epps.
Aye.
Ms. Sotaria Holland shed.
Aye.
Dr. Sheila Jackson. Ms. Carletta Lundie.
Um nay.
Chairman House.
Aye.
Dr. Sharon Porter. T Carter Ross, aye. Ms. Keisha Thorpe.
Nay.
Ms. Carol Walker.
Nay.
This is Robin Welsh. I'm sorry.
I did you hear me?
No, I didn't.
I'm sorry, nay.
Nay, right. Uh Ms. Talise Wood.
Nay.
We have a tie vote. Uh Mr. Dixon, you did not record a vote for a sound, would you dare to?
Yes, Ms. Keisha Thorpe.
I'm I'm sorry, sir. Uh. Could you, could you repeat, aye or aye?
Uh. Uh can you repeat that again?
So the question is, we are voting right now for Mr. T Carter Ross. So you are either accepting with an aye or not accepting with a nay.
That is a nay.
All right. Then the nays have it.
Okay.
Six to five.
So we want to, right this time, we want to. Place a motion on the floor to accept Ms. Keisha Thorpe as the co-chair.
I make a motion that we accept um Ke- Keisha Thorpe as the co-chair for the P C A for the coming year.
Right for vice chair.
Oh, vice chair. Thank you so much.
So. All right, calling the roll call, uh Reverend Dr. Orlando Jermaine Bego.
Hi.
Mr. Clarence Dixon.
Hi.
Mr. Will Epps. I'm sorry, could you repeat? Sir, you were muted.
He he.
You're still muted. I'm sorry. Hi.
Hi, thank you. Ms. Sotaria Holland shed.
Aye.
Dr. Sheila Jackson. Ms. Carletta Lundie.
Aye.
Chairman House.
Yes.
Dr. Sharon Porter. T Carter Ross votes yes. Ms. Thorpe.
Aye.
Ms. Carol Walker.
Aye.
This is Robin Welsh.
Aye.
Ms. Talise Wood.
Aye.
Uh the ayes have it.
Congratulations, Ms. Thorpe. Welcome to the officer position and role. It's a lot of work.
Thank you. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves.
Okay, so now we have the position of recording secretary. Are there any nominations from the floor? I nominate that T Carter Ross remains at the role as recording secretary.
I accept the nomination.
Nobody else wants to challenge that? Nobody else wants to take notes? Okay. So we'll go ahead and close it. And at this time, I need a um motion from the floor. To accept the nomination of T Carter Ross as recording secretary.
I move that we accept T Carter Ross as recording secretary for the upcoming year.
Uh second emotion.
Can we move until a roll call vote?
Dr. Orlando Jermaine Bego.
Hi.
Mr. Clarence Dixon.
Hi.
Mr. Will Epps.
Hi.
Ms. Sotaria Holland shed.
Aye.
Dr. Sheila Jackson. Ms. Carla Lundie.
Aye.
Chairman House.
Aye.
Dr. Sharon Porter. T Carter Ross votes aye. Ms. Keisha Thorpe.
Aye.
Ms. Carol Walker.
Aye.
This is Robin Welsh.
Aye.
Ms. Talise Wood.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you and congratulations to the new officers. Ms. Lopez, I will now respond to the email. I couldn't do so with the officers in place. We have been invited to a meeting. With um representatives of P G C P S. To discuss a lot of the concerns that were purged for with the previous officers regarding um administrative support. To include um email addresses, um the joint letter, um resources to uh. A- and I can't say funding, but to financially support um us doing outreach in the community because we don't have a budget. Um and so uh. They have invited us to a meeting on the twelfth of uh June at eleven A M. And so um it is an in meeting that I would like all officers to be there. If you cannot, that is understandable. Um it was not a time that I set, it's the time that they provided and we will make do. Um and I will definitely be in attendance. Okay. Ms. Lopez, I will send an email to you to respond to that. And at this time, I want to say congratulations and uh yeah. Dance hands. Now we are moving into item two point zero three. Dr. Jackson is not here. Um to discuss the retreat and I I will say um. It was very interesting uh to to get the um approval. Um to just have this retreat and as discussed when I first mentioned it, it's a give us an opportunity to one. Get to know each other outside of the screen. Um to, it's just four hours, so how do we quickly build community? But um come out of this retreat, what talk points? That we can use to engage with the community as well as a clear charge. Um based on what we are doing and why we are here and we are an advisement group. Um the Board of Education members have been elected. To go out and engage with the constituents. That is their role. That is what they are responsible for. That is not what we are here for. We are here to advise, but in order to advise, we got to first understand what's happening. And most advisement advisors come into place, sitting down with the C E O. As well as the the managerial team to understand the strengths, the weaknesses, opportunities, threats. Like what's really happening in the landscape of the company. As you all saw, that's part of the report. You brought us together. You said, go out there and engage with the community. No, 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 no. Let's back it up a little bit. We got to understand what's happening in the community. At first, that starts with sitting down with our board members. The C E O to have a better understanding, what have you all been hearing? And so the retreat, it won't be long. We will get in quickly and get out, but it is to build community amongst us. We have another year. We've spent the year really doing all the administrative work, getting the policies, you know. Getting to understand of the policies, getting our um bylaws in place, which we will need to revise. Um now that we can kind of breathe because we came in, get policies, get them done. And now we can see structurally what needs to be in place, but we can pass it on to the next group of people. But um. My thoughts were that we really are in a place that we are connected. With what's happening in the community so we can provide recommendations, but we also need to be connected what's happening in the school system itself. So um Ms. Dent and I spoke about the retreat in a way, I I would love the board. Liaison to be present like Ms. Adam Stafford says she would be, but also the C E O liaison. And right now, it's not clear who the C E O liaison. It's not Ms. Welsh or Dr. Jackson because they're actually members of the P C A as appointees from the C E O. So um th- there's a lot that needs to be figured out. About how they see us and how they need to engage with us. But in order for them to hear us, we need to make sure we have a unified voice. And it's clear on what we're saying, how we're moving. And then when we pass the baton to the next group that's coming in. That there is some consistency in what's happening as the P C A being used as a resource. And not as a group that's just sitting there and it's just like, oh, well, they're here, you know. As the face of the parent. We want to be the voice of the community. We want to be proactively engaged. I hope that many of you have received the invitation, like some of us did, to be a part of the Technology Task Force. Right? And it was a very interesting call. I know Dr. Porter was on there, Mr. Um Ross was on there, Mr. Epps was on there. And so those are the type of things that, to me, the P C A is very instrumental in, into being on the forefront. You know, to give advice and opinion of things that are happening before they become, you know, the law. Okay? And so that's what the retreat, retreat, the retreat is about. Um. Ms. Lopez, if you can pull up the agenda, Dr. Jackson did share the agenda.
Um yes, just give me.
Okay, Ms. Welsh, I see your hand up.
I, well, I went, I wanted to ask some questions. I'm I'm not sure I understand. What you're talking about as far as the a C E O liaison, because I do know that the policy itself does address it. Addressed that either the C E O or the C E O liaison may attend the meetings. Um and I I'm just curious, what does the P K P C A want from a C E O liaison?
So first of all, who is the C E O liaison? Because Ms. Dent was not sure who that was.
I am.
Oh, you are the C E O liaison?
Uh huh.
You or you and Dr. Jackson?
Well, Dr. Jackson, it says specifically that Dr. Jackson, that the director of student engagement will be. Will be uh attending the meetings as our liaison also. But specifically as this, who was appointed from the C E O's off, like, I'm not from the C E O's office, but the C E O making an appointment of a liaison. She specifically, she had um asked me to be the liaison and I and I certainly will do whatever it is that you need for me to do. I just, I don't, you know, I.
Oh, well, that's interesting because Ms. Dent wasn't aware. She wasn't aware, like who was the liaison? And so when you ask, what does the P C A want the liaison to do? You know, the liaison, one, shouldn't be voting because you're really, you're not a member. Like Sheila.
And that's fine with me. I don't have to vote.
Adam Stafford, right, Adam Stafford is the board liaison. She does not vote. So. Yeah, that needs to probably be some offline discussion because if that's the case, then your your vote has been counting.
Well, I apologize because and the only reason, so of course I was new to being the C E O liaison and from the very start. every time you voted on something, you would ask me to vote, so I voted, but I had no idea. I mean, I, you're correct. I don't think we've had very good clarity about the roles of the people.
Because it says designate, not liaison. Right? And designate is, is notated in the, the policy that, that the CEO has to designate. So I'm not sure if you are the liaison. But I think that we may need to table this discussion.
Well, then we can do more research on that, too.
Yeah, we, we, and you know, and so that's why I submitted all that stuff I did as it relates to the board policy and asked for the second read and not to go through. Because there was not a lot of clarity on some areas, even outside of discussion. So yeah, but I have you down as the CEO designate. And when we look at the numbers in the count for how many PCAC members, there were two designees identified.
So, so can I just read to you what the policy says? It says the CEO may serve as a liaison to the PCAC or may designate a staff person, a staff member to serve as liaison. So she had asked me to serve as the liaison. And certainly I, and so to be honest, I, and I would like to share this with PCAC in general because I had been on a PCAC in a previous school system and generally what would happen is that the, the, either the CEO, in this instance, it was a superintendent, would bring to the, bring to the PCAC a wide variety of topics and areas that maybe they would like to know more about what's going on in the school system about. So that, and then for that school year, they would identify which areas and it would be the PCAC would decide, we want to know more about how you do this, how you do that. I'll give you an example. Let's just say we, you would start to offer me to say, one of the areas we really want to know is, is what is the school system really doing about safety and security in the school system? Because that seems like a hot topic right now. So then the CEO, and previously it was the superintendent and the other system was then would go in and bring, bring back or have staff come back and bring all the information about what's being done. Then the PCAC would also do research on what other systems do and everything. And then they'd come back with a report to the board and to the superintendent with information about, you know, we think maybe you should consider doing this and maybe you should consider doing that. So you'd be advising the board and the P and the superintendent, maybe some other things that they need to be doing in terms of safety and security. And, and in doing that, you would be engaging the community because you might be, like, say you might do a survey and put it out, like, at all the different community members within each district to get their feedback. So it, so now you have sort of subject areas that are of major interest to parents and the community members that you're actually working to get engagement. And, and in that instance, and that's, and that's just the only thing I know about. There might be many other ways to do it, but in that instance, it would be the CEO's liaison's responsibility or the CEO to go ahead and, and provide for the PCAC information about whatever topic they would like to know more about and how we're operating. And I know earlier tonight, you said, we don't even know a lot of the things, what's the school system doing about this or that or whatever? So, so that would be a way of informing the PCAC members and then, and then learning more about other ways to do it and stuff to be able to advise the, the, the board and the CEO on it. So that was, that's just a suggestion.
And, and, and I want to say this, everything that you suggested, I have been asking for all year. So I have been asking, and if I would have known that you were the liaison, because I'm, I'm reading the policy and it says, two members shall be appointed representing school level staff, faculty and administration as a current PGCPS employee. And so that's why it's not clear on if you're the liaison or you are the appointed representative which is an actual PCAC member.
So I was thinking, two members shall be appointed. This is, this is, this is a very good conversation. I was thinking that what they meant by two members shall be appointed representing school level staff, faculty, administration, that you wanted, that you, they would want within this policy. They would, the policy is saying, we want someone like maybe, we want a teacher that's there, that also is there. So, and now we do have one of our district representatives is a principal, but instead, but that just happened.
She's a district rep. She's not, so that, that goes to number nine. I mean, the nine members should be appointed.
Oh, I agree.
Right.
But what I'm saying is you could then say, we would like to also have a principal because we want to, we want to get the principal's perspective on these things. So we want the principal to be in this meeting, too.
So I, I, Ms. Welsh, I, you know, that, what I would like to do is we were supposed to be talking about the retreat.
I'm so sorry.
No, no, no. This, this, this is a, this, this just brings me to why, you know, the retreat is important, but it's also important that the school system is very clear on when you're creating policy, that everyone has an understanding of what it looks like, what everyone role is. And, and we're not moving through this space. And so at this point in time, you have been operating as an appointed representative who has voted throughout, not the liaison.
Well, I apologize.
About the liaison and, and, and the role of the liaison, the, the level of support that we as the officers needed throughout in the engagement, in the insight, in the guidance as we were working with the board liaison and then having to call the board office, right? It's the same thing as it relates to oversight and guidance. It is the same thing and, and what you've done as a member has been very beneficial. And so I, I'm not sure if it's just a teacher or a principal as a representative, because there's also a union representative that has not been in place, that has not been filled as of yet. And then there's the discussion around what union will be represented. And so I, I, I think that this was another reason and thank you why we needed to have a retreat early on.
No, I agree. And actually, as you're saying, I'm thinking, I'm so glad that we have this on the list for policies for next year because that we need to get some of this cleared up. I mean, I don't, I don't, I mean, if the committee votes in this, so what are they thinking when they're saying we want this and this and this? And I don't know, this might be one that they, we would, we don't have an administrative procedure that goes for this one, but this might be one that there should be an administrative procedure that would then lay out all the little details that the policy doesn't necessarily, because the policy is telling us what should happen, but it doesn't tell us how. So it doesn't even say how you go about getting some of these people. So it might be, I don't know, it's, it's a good conversation to have, though.
It is. Yep, and that's why I notated it the way I did, because I asked. I asked. And I documented the ask, so I appreciate it. Ms. Lundee, your hand is up?
Yes, thank you so much. So I have like two comments. Could, Ms. Lopez, please put the agenda back up and kind of scroll down? So I can, because that preface my question, I mean, my statements. Alrighty. Thank you. Okay, fabulous. Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Lopez. So I wanted to ask my first question is, which is a question Chairman House is, how should we prepare with respect to our areas? And the reason why I'm asking specifically for that, I'm asking this question is because I had a previous meeting, full disclosure to my colleagues here, I had a previous meeting scheduled on this date, so I will not be able to stay until 2:00. I would have to leave at 12:00. And so if I have to prepare a report or a paper or something like that, please let me know. But I did want to ask you, how should we prepare? Is anything specifically looking for us with respect to our areas?
We, we're going to be out of there by 12:30.
Okay.
So at, you know, at, from 11:00 to about 12:30, it'll be more so a working lunch, right? And, and so it would be very, you know, informal, but we'll, as Dr. Johnson is sharing, that it will be about how do we work together to identify how we operate, you know, really as agents of change, trying to really connect with what is happening in the school system and what we do. And I also have to be out of there because my daughter's birthday is Saturday, well, the celebration is. So, no, we won't be there long. Just come with an open mind. Definitely review the engagement policies, give some feedback. It really is centered around the discussion that we've had and how do we really build a culture or create a culture here at PGCPS where engagement is at the forefront. We are working with parents and community partners as partners in education. Like, we, we have a lot of community members that are on here and how are we really engaging with the church? Right? And, and I'm hoping even out of this retreat, we may have further recommendations that from the retreat that we can send to the board and the CEO to say, hey, we came up with some ideas on, if, if you need a new list of daycare providers, you know, connect with the church. If you need some more tutoring options, connect with this community group, right? Like you were asking, Ms. Lundee, if there is not a policy out there about how do we make sure that our students are civically involved in things? How do we work to develop something like that, right? How do we get the NAACP, you know, in, involved in really helping to support, to move various agendas that impact the school system, right? So it, it really is not, you know, come dress comfortably. Right? Be ready for a group photo, of course. But just have an open mind and come with your ideas because what we want to do is we want to just be action oriented. We've planted a lot of seeds this year. So they're, they're going to begin to grow. So we're, we're just making sure that we have enough people that we can engage with because we're going to have a huge harvest by the end of next school year. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Ms. Welsh? You still have your hand up? You have a question?
I don't mean to. I apologize.
Oh, no, thank you. So are there any other questions, comments? All right.
Ms. Mailhouse? If, if I can just say really quick, I still have maybe a few or a couple of members who have not confirmed attendance?
Okay, and so please make sure you're confirmed whether you're coming or not, because we definitely had to give food and I, I do want you to know that we, we had to work very hard to get this in place. So thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman House?
Yes, ma'am.
Karla, will we be voting on anything and do you anticipate any voting that needs to take place?
No.
So we'll
No, we won't be doing any voting and all the activities that we will do, anything that will be voted on, we will bring it back. And
Okay, fabulous.
So our next meeting would be in, Rosa, is it August? No, is the answer. Yeah, no, no, we won't be. And so at this time, are there any other questions? Comments, concerns? Nope, we are moving on to item three, follow-up and next step. So the follow-up, this is our last meeting for the school year. I just want to thank you all. We did a wonderful job. And I want to say kudos to everyone. Please give yourself a round of applause. We went into this with, and I'm going to say this from my perspective, it wasn't a lot of clarity. I know what I read, but there still were a lot of holes and I feel like we still got a lot accomplished. And I really appreciate you all entrusting me to chair the, the committee and I will do my best to continue on doing the work that we all have set forward to is to make the voice of the parents and community members heard so we can create some impact that's sustainable for PGCPS. Next steps, Ms. Lopez. When is our, we don't have a meeting in July, so is our next meeting on August?
Thank you for that question, Chairman House. I believe the board voted on the upcoming calendar. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the first meeting will be on the 9th of August. I'll invite you to look at the board calendar that was approved at the last board meeting. And I think those dates were plugged in in there for PCAC.
Okay, so so can, can you do this? Can you confirm and just send out an email to us confirming when the meeting is?
Yes, absolutely. I can send that. And matter of fact, I can add that information in the folder for Saturday so everybody can have access to that information.
That, that will be great. I appreciate it. Item 3.02 is just next steps. It says on here, and the next step is I'll be reaching out to the newly appointed officers so we can identify a standing meetings that we will have for the calendar year. So we can prepare and work and have a better understanding of what needs to happen. So Ms. Thorpe, we will bring you up to speed in what we had attempted to do this year and you know, identify what needs to work for us as a new group going into this new school year. Is there any other questions, comments? If not, we are moving into item four, closing remarks. I do want to say one last thing. I'm hoping that everyone stays next year. If for any reason you feel as though you are not in a position and you don't have the capacity to continue on as a representative in your prospective area, please reach out to me, the board liaison, and copy all of the officers. So we would then send a notice to your district member. And if it, if you're not representing a district, we will communicate with the board liaison because what needs to happen is it has to go back out to the community. And right now, we are still waiting for the board to fill District 2's position that has been open since March. And so I am nicely nudging them to move forward with doing what needs to be done and making sure that there's representation for every district as well as identifying the union representation that needs to be on the committee itself. At this time, it is 8:11 and I am calling the meeting to closure. We can now adjourn. Have a motion.
I put a motion for us to adjourn.
A second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Have a great day. Have a great summer.
You too. Have a great one.